Half a day and welcome. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today's Wednesday, June 22, 2022. The time is 1:05 PM. In compliance with the open government law, notices for this hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post on Wednesday, June 15, and again on Monday, June 20, 2022. They posted to the government of Guam Public Notice Portal and livestreamed via the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. Notices were also disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. We have one agenda item today. That's Bill Number 309-36 LS, introduced by myself, Therese M. Terlahi, and Act to amend, Section 122, 12G, Article 2, Chapter 12, Title 10, Guam Code annotated, relative to ensuring persons or entities who have reported are promptly informed of Guam Board of Medical Examiners' actions and decisions. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of my colleagues here today, beginning with the minority leader, Senator Chris Duennius and Senator Anthony Adet. As a sponsor, I'm going to begin with an introduction of the bill. The bill, the timely status reports of complaints filed with the Guam Board of Medical Examiners is one of several big concerns expressed by many stakeholders and members of the Committee on Health. On February 16, 2022, the Health Committee held its third oversight hearing with Guam Board of Medical Examiners to inquire about, one, the board's procedures and discretion of physicians with complaints in other jurisdictions; two, public disclosure of current accusations, physician license revocations, suspensions, or other disciplinary actions by other jurisdictions pursuant to public law 3184, the Patient Protection through Information Act; and three, complaint investigation and hearing timelines and updates to complainants or reporting entity. While there were various explanations provided for the delayed investigation and adjudication of cases, a justifiable explanation for the delay or lack of updates to complainants, regardless of the stage of case investigation, was not provided. I thank the HPLO, which is the Health Professional Licensing Office, and the Board of Guam Medical Examiners, the Board of Medical Examiners, for acknowledging the need for better communicating on the status of cases to complainants during the hearing. So that was acknowledged. And it was clear from the testimony provided by GBME and from public testimony that there is a need for clear guidance to be placed into statute to ensure that prompt updates will be provided to complainants. Bill 309 is only one of several bills introduced to address the range of complex challenges that impede the Guam Board of Medical Examiners and other health boards from fulfilling their mandates to improve and protect patient care. The prompt reporting on the status of complaints is the very least that should be done to protect patients or their families who are already mourning the loss of their loved one or dealing with a range of devastating health and economic impacts resulting from alleged medical negligence from any further stress and pain. I humbly ask my colleagues for the support of this bill. So for the record, the committee has invited and requested feedback on Bill 309 from the following: the Guam Board of Medical Examiners to include legal counsel provided by the Office of the Attorney General and the Department of Public Health and Social Services Health Professional Licensing Office. The chairperson of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, Dr. Nathaniel Berg; vice-chairperson, Philip Flores; and the HPLO administrator, Xenia Pessina, emailed the committee to inform that they will not be present at today's hearing due to other scheduled commitments, but that written testimony will be forthcoming. Pessina also informed that the HPLO's acting administrator, Brianna Sablon, is off island and not able to attend. According to vice-chairperson Philip Flores, the board will be submitting testimony in favor of Bill 309. Stakeholders who had submitted concerns to my office regarding the board's procedural practices with their filed complaints were also notified. For the record, the committee has received so far written testimony from the following: David Lebowski in support with suggested amendments; Daniel Baza in support; Jennifer Schersha in support; Rena Brown in support; Jose Tetehagou in support; Nicole Flores in support; Maria Espinoza in support with suggested amendments; Annalyn Lagrimas in support with suggested amendments. And we just received one a little while ago from Dr. David, Dr. Annette David, who is one of the members of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, which she says is testimony concurred with the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. I'd like to recognize the presence of Senator Joanne Brown, who's also joined us. There's no one who signed up to present verbal testimony today, so I'm going to continue with what the committee has received, including a fiscal impact note from BBMR, which states that "The cost of requiring to inform via phone call, letter, or email is part of the board's operational costs and should not pose any additional fiscal impact to its operational budget. Bill 309 is administrative in nature and poses no fiscal impact upon the funds of the government of Guam." All right, I had some questions for the board members who might have shown up. Since they're not here, I'm just going to read these into the record. They might be watching and maybe in their written testimony, they can address some of these. So since the February oversight hearing, has the GBME implemented standard procedures for case status notifications to complainants? If so, what are those procedures? They had promised at the hearing that they would do that. Number two, as the fiscal impact note for BBMR states that the cost of informing via phone call, letter, or email is part of the board's operational costs, I wanted to see if the board agrees with that assessment, that funding should not be an issue. Do you foresee any other challenges that will hinder the prompt reporting or actions, decisions, and final decisions? So some issue has been raised in the testimony that we have received as to the words promptly I just want to read the language directly from the bill, which states... So the bill is a one paragraph bill, and it adds these words to subsection G of 12212 10 GCA. It adds the words actions, decisions, oh, sorry, I'll read the whole thing. So the board shall promptly acknowledge all reports received under this section. Persons or entities reporting under this section shall also be promptly informed. And so I am adding the words through phone call, letter, or email of the boards, and I'm crossing out the words final disposition, and I'm putting the board's actions, decisions, and final disposition in the matters reported. So in other words, there was already in statute an obligation that the board promptly inform those who had submitted reports to the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, but I'm further clarifying that to mean they've informed them by phone call, letter, or email. And I'm also saying that they don't need to wait until final disposition to inform the reporters of the status of a case, and that they can, they should, and they shall inform them of any actions, decisions, and the final disposition in the matters. So they don't have to wait until final disposition, they report to them the status all along if any action is taken. So the existing statute did not define promptly informed, and I didn't amend that language by this bill, but many of the suggestions that came in are in regards to the words promptly informed. So I'm gonna, so David Lebowski, for example, specifically recommended specifically defining promptly. As a consumer, he sees being promptly informed as within a few working days, or suggests following the FOIA request law timeline, which provides for four days to provide information, or notwithstanding the request and approval of an additional 10 days. The bill, according to Mr. Lebowski, the bill should be extended to cover the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners and the Guam Board of Nurse Examiners, with whom stakeholders also express difficulty with the receipt of information on case statuses. And he also suggests that we address the makeup of the board by adding more citizen consumers. I think we have another bill that actually addresses that. So Maria Espinoza specifically recommended, so I'm only highlighting the recommendations that were made, she recommended that a person, or adding that a person or entity promptly be informed through a phone call within 72 hours after the board's meeting, and a letter within seven working days of the board's final disposition or action, or actions, decisions, and final disposition in matters. So she notes that subsection C of the same section that we are amending states, C, malpractice insurance carriers and affected licensees shall be required to file with the board a report of each final judgment, settlement, or award against insured licensees. Licensees not covered by malpractice insurance carriers shall be required to file the same information with the board regarding themselves. All such reports shall be made to the board promptly within 30 days. So 30 days is what she is recommending. And most recently, the policy, she includes that the policies and procedures at GMH state that the hospital will respond to the patient within seven days after the complaint is filed. So she gave us the, you know, another part of the statute, requires a report in 30 days, and the GMH policies that require a response to the patient in seven days after a complaint is made. So I think, and Annalyn Lagrimas recommended adding a third-party entity apart from the GBME, much like a state ombudsman, to oversee and follow up to ensure that cases are being addressed and in line with national standards of care. So these are some of the recommendations that were made. Most of them involve the timelines for that prompt, the promptly informing patients or those who have reported issues to the board, and I think those are valid, valid concerns that the committee will be trying to finesse that language. I'd like to read, we just received this prior to the hearing, so this is dated June 22, half a day, Speaker Terlahi. The following is a written testimony which has been concurred with the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. This is prepared by Dr. Annette David, who's currently off island. And it's quoted, "In principle, I believe it is good to keep complainants informed. However, to do this, the board needs dedicated full-time investigators who can fully pursue the various cases we have to handle. As a board member with a medical background, I am able to give an informed opinion about the appropriateness of medical care and of public health policy. But during my term as a board member, most of the cases I have had to handle have not been about inappropriate medical care, but about physician misconduct, sexual assault, and impairment issues, which I do not have the expertise to address without legal assistance. Also, board members are volunteers who also have full-time jobs outside the GBME. It would also be good to have a board member with expertise in mental health and substance abuse disorders, and for the legislature to consider establishing an independent professional wellness program to assist physicians and other professionals with mental health and/or substance abuse issues that interfere with their ability to perform their professional duties." Again, that's prepared by Dr. Annette David, who is currently off island on the station of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. All right, and just to update the committee members, when we last checked with the Health Professional Licensing Office, who has been trying to procure investigators for all of the health licensing boards, I think that they have completed that procurement. In other words, that they have been able to hire on contract an investigator, or, or they're trying to fill those positions and hire on contract lawyers, one for prosecuting and a hearings officer as well, and that they were pursuing full-time investigators as a in-house position. All right, so that's all I've got on this bill, and I welcome my colleagues to make comments or questions. Minority leader, Senator Duennius.
Mrs. Massey, Madam Chair, and I certainly am looking forward to the deliberation on this bill, and I, I do support it and its intent. Once again, while we are disappointed that there's no one here to testify, I'm encouraged by the vice chair's testimony. Phil Flores saying that he will be submitting written testimony in favor. I think that was very responsible of him to at least give us the indication and let us know that that testimony will be forthcoming, and I'm sure he's a man of his word, and we'll see that, and I'm very encouraged by that. Madam Chair, and those who would be viewing this hearing probably will wonder once again why we are addressing the gallery, which is composed of individual young people who are participating in the summer youth employment training program. And so far, we've gotten great feedback that they're enjoying very much their experience, and so we're going through this process of kind of opining a little bit more than we probably would during a hearing, so that they can get an understanding of the process and how this deliberation takes place. Madam Chair, I'm glad that the testimonies so far have all been in favor. I'm a little, I won't say concerned, but I think some of the subject matter brought up by Dr. David was not necessarily pertaining directly to the bill and what it calls for. While they're all, just for the benefit once again of our young people, the Guam Board of Medical Examiners deals with some very sensitive matters. Usually, it pertains to some sort of medical procedure that had an unfavorable outcome, you know, even to the point of somebody maybe not surviving a medical procedure. While that can happen for very different, various different reasons, you know, many individuals will take up issue if they feel as though there were factors involved, and this is sort of the, the board which they can prey upon for relief and understanding of, of what they may believe have been an outcome that maybe could have been avoided or involved some sort of malpractice. And so it's very, very, you can understand the individuals who we're talking about and why they would really kind of complain when they don't feel as though there's been prompt communication with them because they're, you know, they're dealing with a lot of issues of probably pain, or if they're the individual themselves and had survived an outcome, or the pain of maybe having lost a loved one and wanting to have more answers. And so that's one of the reasons why our chairwoman has been responding to a number of inquiries that this committee has made over the months during this session to kind of get more information as to what has been the disposition of this board on matters such as this. And so the outcome was to try to further the definition of prompt responses to those who would have filed complaints and are looking for answers in terms of what may have happened in unfortunate, and like I said, more than likely an unfortunate than not a good outcome. Madam Chair, I would just say, as I was reading through it, I may propose working with you on, just maybe going a little further on the letter and maybe making it certified mail if it would be sent as a letter. That protects both sides. Basically, it protects the individual saying, I did send the lender, letter, and it protects the individual who is looking to get the response, you know, that they sign off on it, so that means they received it. So may try to expand it a little bit if, unless it would be redundant, but I think it may be a good amendment. And then, of course, what we'll do is take into consideration the recommendations of those who took the time to write very elaborate testimony with regard to this bill, and the way we would do that is work with the committee, and we might even substitute the bill before it goes to the floor with some added language perhaps, if it didn't change the bill too much. So that's the procedure we would be going through. I, for one, am in favor of this, and like I said, the vice chairman has already indicated to us that we will be receiving testimony from himself, more than likely on behalf of the board, to further strengthen the support for this effort. So that's where we are, and so, Madam Chair, with that, that's the extent of my comments, and I thank you for introducing the bill. I think it's good legislation. It strengthens the statute that's already in existence, and probably will result in faster information being provided to those who are seeking remedy for the situation that they are dealing with. And so that can only help a situation that's already, you know, difficult to deal with. Mrs. Massey, Madam Chair.
Mrs. Massey, Senator. Senator Adet, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker. Once again, here we have a piece of legislation that is a simple piece of legislation, but yet significant, in the board's final actions, decisions, and final disposition and matters reported, going out and being promptly, the persons or entities properly informed. I think the only concern, and I'm glad the, my colleague had brought it up, were perhaps a certified letter and email. Telephone calls, I'm not sure, because there's no way to track whether an individual had received a phone call or not, and if it's going to be through phone call, maybe a phone call followed by a certified letter or an email just to ensure that they were properly notified in that manner. Other than that, Madam Speaker, just like the, the bill that we previously, previously heard at 11:30 on defining working days, just like you said, these are pieces of legislation that are simplified but very significant to the reporting requirements and also to the decisions and actions of the board. Maybe this could be a pilot to other boards and commissions on notifying parties of their actions and decisions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I kind of concur with the comments of our two other colleagues, Senator Chris and Senator Tony, with regards to the, the means of notification in terms of what action ultimately is taken by the Medical Board of Examiners. You know, because certainly the parties can change. You could say, I got a phone call, and someone can deny it, or maybe the, the individuals representing the board are no longer there, and, and there's no way to verify that. I, I think however it is, even if it's a minor complaint, there should be some formal written document that outlines or lays out essentially what the ultimate decisions are. You know, we're seeing in some of these professional positions here, I mean, we see it with the judiciary. I mean, if you file a complaint against an attorney, you file a complaint against a judge, you might hear about it, maybe you don't, you know, the, they go in and review themselves and their own committee and determine, they have their own investigator and determine what the outcome of it. In most cases, the public never hears what the outcome is, good or bad, it's silent. Same thing we're seeing here now with, with members of our medical community, many of them, you know, well-respected and are very professional with the work that they do, and yet unfortunately, we found over time that there's a small percentage, I don't know what it is with our, with our, our humanness here, but there, there's always a small percentage that ends up using or abusing their official position or their official capacity, and then allegations come forth, and it might be in terms of a medical procedure, it might be in terms of their own personal action. I mean, we've heard recently of some accusations of sexual in nature. You know, when you look at your, your doctor, you look at someone who you trust, you look at someone who you're seeking direction for with regards to your health and your well-being, without ever a thought that they didn't be anything other than responsible. And Madam Speaker, I appreciate the efforts that you've been making in pursuing this issue, and it does need to be pursued, because in sitting in the hearings that we've had leading up to this, including the one that had to do specifically with the, the delay in responding to public complaints, or the comment, you know, in one particular case that the report was lost. And you end up having a situation, Madam Speaker, where the victim, or the victims now are further victimized, because now they have to be the ones to advocate over and over and over again to find out if any proper action has been taken place, or if there's any resolution. I mean, we want the board in place also to put another eye on the situation to determine, you know, was everything above board, and if it was, you know, clear that, that medical professional, and, and we could move on, but if not, or if that individual is harming other people, you know, that appropriate action is taken to address that, so our community is not put in such a compromising situation where they, they believe they're victimized, and then they're further victimized by the system because of the lack of response. It's unfortunate that no one is here from, from the Medical Examiners Board, as you mentioned, hopefully they're listening, maybe they'll, they'll provide written testimony. But I think at an appropriate time, Madam Speaker, if we don't see any response, you know, the committee can take appropriate action to subpoena these officials, because I don't think it's acceptable. You know, it's, it's by the, the laws and authority of our island here that have been passed that allow these medical professionals to practice, and we have a regulated process under which that happens. And as such, I mean, our people have to have some recourse and some comfort level of knowing that, you know, at the end of the day, there's accountability. I mean, in our respective positions, the public can determine very quickly and very directly whether or not they're satisfied with our performance, or if issues come up and they're not happy with us. You know, they get to dispense with us as they choose. But in these other, you know, important, even as I said earlier, trusted positions, to have silence in response or to hear the explanations that really just didn't settle well. And I, I'm sure I'm not the only member of the legislature that we're not satisfied with the response. If there's an issue or deficiency, then by all means, correct it. There's no reason the medical board could not come forth and say, this is where we need help, or this is where we have limitations. I understand, you know, all these medical professionals obviously are very busy people, but that's not an excuse to not be responsive with regards to these type of complaints. And as you know, Madam Speaker, some of these complaints are very serious and unsettling and unacceptable. So I certainly support the bill, I think with a minor modification with regards to how we determine what the formal decision is. Even if it's a very short response, I think it should be in writing, and be it certified mail, or however the case may be, so that, that the individual or individuals that might be filing a complaint have something in writing, and then they can determine from there how they, they wish to proceed. So with that, Madam Speaker, I have no further comment with regards to Bill 309. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, and thank you to my colleagues for their suggestions and, and insight on this bill. Of course, thanks to all those who submitted testimony on it and took the time to really share their... share their personal experiences with us, and that's really where this bill came from. So I try when writing bills to start with, what's the problem that we're trying to solve? So the problem that we were trying to solve here was when we had an oversight hearing and just in my office, we are receiving complaints, and not just one or two, but several complaints, I would say many complaints, from people who had submitted complaints to the Guam Board of Medical Licenseur and had not received any feedback from the board as to what happened with their cases. And as Dr. David testified, some of these cases were regarding, you know, what was alleged as medical negligence. And some of the cases, however, were things, as she describes them, she says, "Most of the cases have been about physician misconduct, sexual assault, and impairment issues." And we cannot under or over-describe the seriousness of those types of allegations and the, what it does to those who have made that complaint, right? So the impact on them was so severe in some cases that it had really, you know, affected their lives. And what they had been waiting for all the while is some response from the board. What happened with their complaint? What happened to these doctors? Were these doctors going to be stopped from committing that on anyone else or not? They really wanted to know. And so that's where the impetus from this bill came from, and I have to thank those people who shared their personal stories, because they were very courageous to do so, very caring, I would say, for the rest of the community, because many of them expressed that their ultimate goal was to ensure that that did not happen to anyone else. And that's what these boards are for. We review everyone who have been granted the privilege of practicing medicine on Guam and that to ensure that they do not abuse that privilege. So we have proposed, again in this bill, to change, it's already mandated that they notify complainants or people making reports, and sometimes the reports come from other people, not the person who was the victim of some misconduct or negligence, but the report might come from another doctor who saw that it happened to his patient, or from an educator who saw that something might have happened. It can come from other sources, it might come from CPS or GPD. All of those entities are authorized to report to this board. So this is to require that anyone who reports is going to get feedback from the Board of Medical Examiners, Medical Licenseur. And so while they were already mandated to report on the final decisions of the board, this requires them to report along the way, and it also requires them to report, well, it gives them options that you report these three ways, and we're trying to get accountability. So I appreciate the suggestions by my colleagues as to whether phone calls are accountable or not, right, whether we can prove that they were contacted by phone or not. But we want to make sure we can track these things and that the licensing offices is held accountable. We did have a case, one of the cases that they complained about was they lost their case, they lost their file. So of course, they got no feedback because their file was lost. So that was very disturbing. Eventually, the office found the file and instituted new policies and procedures to make sure that that could not happen again, no files would be removed from the office by anyone. And they have addressed many things, the board, I want to give them credit. They have since our oversight hearing hired two attorneys, they've completed that procurement, they've hired an attorney to prosecute cases, so they can have hearings and prosecute these cases, and they've hired an attorney to be a hearings officer. They have also, their counsel has said to the Daily Post on June 13 that this allows their counsel or their prosecuting counsel to work with the board when the board does its investigation of cases. So hopefully, we have been providing them tools, and they are utilizing the funds that come to them through licensing fees to the maximum extent possible to fulfill the duties of the board. Again, this is one of several bills introduced to address the range of complex challenges that impede the Board of Medical Examiners and other health boards, and we will be looking to those as well. Are you here to testify, sir, on the bill? Okay, please, please have a seat and proceed, we're just about to close, but... Please state your name for the record, and then you may begin testifying.
Good afternoon, my name is Robin Markward.
Can you, I'm sorry, Markwart?
Markward.
Okay, got it.
It's Latin, it means Marcus Quartus. My ancestor is a Roman king, the fourth king of Rome. I mean, it's true, but whoop-de-doo, right? Markwart is the last name. I got a gist of what the bill is about. I do appreciate that you are advocating for the average, the average patient. My mom died at GRMC. I brought her in instead of bingo that night because she had shortness of breath. So I didn't take her to GMH, because I've, over the years, last two decades at least, '99, people go in and they die, you know, they end up dying and they seem okay, right? Various reasons. So I didn't take her to GMH, I took her to the new hospital, thinking, literally, I said to my sister, "Let's take her to GRMC, get her fixed, get her fixed up," thinking everything would be okay. So that was a Sunday night. She died Thursday morning, so four, three, four days later. The issue there was my sister, at about 2:30 on Wednesday, was pleading to see the doctor before they let her out, before they let my mom out, pleading with the nurse. And the reason is because my mom was vomiting. So the, my sister was insisting to see the doctor, but the doctor never came. Too many other patients. I've also experienced myself with my mom in the hospitals getting kicked out of a room because I'm insisting on a plan of treatment that the hospital doesn't agree with, but they're insisting on doing it their way, which is to cut off legs, amputations. Now, to clarify and summarize your bill, I think you're doing something about the Medical Malpractice Mandatory Arbitration Act?
No, sir, this bill is to require the Guam Board of Medical Examiners to respond to people who have filed complaints and to give them an update on the status of the complaints or any actions that the board has made.
Simple, a simple step towards improvement. So interestingly enough, our doctors, medical doctors, the word doctor is teacher. So they're not, they're not professionally called healers or find the best remedies, something like that. It's, they're teachers, and then their work is called practice. I played drums all my life since I was seven, I'm 26 now, I say that right? I'm 26 now. It looks like 26, or this way, anyway. So I've been practicing a lot, I practice every day. The life of our loved ones shouldn't be in the hands of someone who's practicing. Why do they do that? Our beloved medical professionals. I love them too, you know, I really do. They work hard, they work too hard sometimes. I think half the times, they're exhausted, overwhelmed, but they have these outs, these words that they use, that are ways for them to get out of liability. So I, I lost my mom, who was, I'm first born, as a teacher. As a teacher, I never learned Chamorro very well, because I was raised in Hawaii. I can count to 10 in Hawaiian.
Sir, with all due respect, on the bill.
I was just shining some light there.
I appreciate that.
Excuse me?
Appreciate that, but on the bill, please.
Of course, of course. So how much time do I have, by the way? I don't want to be interrupted too many times, but at the same time, I want to respect...
Yes, if you could conclude your remarks, I'd appreciate that, but so please, yeah.
Within a minute or two?
Yes.
Okay. So what I was talking about is teacher. So getting back to the bill. Okay. I sought, I sought help, remedy, and an attorney gave me a case. The case the attorney gave me was CV 055919, CV 055919, Taite Gui versus GRMC. So I was given that case to read, the decision and order, to be told it's tough to win cases against medical malpractice, practice again. So I'm just going to conclude by saying some things that I think will help. It may seem, it may not seem related, but I assure you it is in regards to the, the overall mindset of people doing the best job they can, especially our doctors, that in my case, I hoped saved my mom. Actually, I didn't even think she was going to die, so that I thought was going to go to get fixed. And this is actually off-topic, but it's related. So abortion should be treated as manslaughter in drunk-driving cases. Marriage is the antidote to abortion. Our language, our Chamorro language, which is kind of dead, died with my mom, I heard her speak it every day with her cousins and friends, should be taught from kindergarten through 12th grade as an elective, not forced, but as an elective from kindergarten. We're not going to learn Chamorro in one year, it's got to be 13 straight solid years. Does anyone here know what Maq Ma Ma means? Maq Ma Ma? Me neither, but it's one of the months. May, it means May. So we got Maq Ma Ma, Ma Ma Ma, May.
Sir, can I, can I ask you some questions?
Please.
Okay, so the bill requires that, the bill would change the current law, which requires the board to notify patients at the end of their disposition of the case, right? So a patient makes a complaint, the board has to investigate it, and at the end of that, they have to report back to the patient what their disposition is. This bill changes that slightly by saying they have to inform sooner, they have to inform every time the board makes a decision, every time it acts on that case, and that every action, it reports back to that patient. Would you support that change to the law?
Yes.
And the other change that this bill would make to the law is, right now, the board's required to notify the patient of the final disposition, but this bill would mandate that they notify them either by phone, email, or mail. Would you support that, and which one of those do you think is the most reliable? Or do you have any issue with that being the way that the Board of Medical Examiners contacts the patients?
Phone.
Is the most reliable? Phone?
As a matter of fact, I filed a complaint yesterday. My mom died August 2, 2018, and it took me that long to figure out that I needed to file a complaint. So there aren't ways, they don't teach us how to do, like you go to the court, they don't teach you how to practice law. The hospital doesn't teach you that a person can fill out a form for medical benefits.
Okay.
So I think phone's the simplest way. In that, phone is email, and what was the third one? Mail, snail mail, as they call it now?
Yes.
And the prices have gone up for shipping? That's the slowest way. So I think the easiest way is by phone.
All right. All right, I'm going to indicate that on the record, yes.
I have one more, or do you have any other questions?
No.
You can ask me a thousand. I have one more comment I wanted to make about medical-related stuff. The reason why I brought up this Maq Ma Ma, which means May, is because we all have a lot of relatives that we love, right? But some of them have drug problems, and I hear this, "Make me moke." You guys ever heard "make me moke"? Moke in Hawaii is like a guy that dresses like me, he's a moke. But "make me moke" is a slang among these drug abusers. I like to say, as governor, I'm the guy that would executive order that all drugs are decriminalized across the board, across the board, to be distributed at university. There's no reason for the cat and mouse chase. I've seen doctors looking like the actors in that movie Hostel with their butcher thing, and like coming to see my mom, and they're like, acting like this. I know of hospital people that smoke cocaine, I don't know them personally, by the way, I'm 16 years, almost 16 years sober as of August 31st, so no beer, no wine, nothing, absolute, but, you know, I'm helping people, and I help people, I try to anyway. A dollar to the guy in the corner of the street, right? Can I have a dollar for medical, whatever they say, right? They got their signs up, I give a dollar when I can. So I think it's horrible that we put people away for 10 years that are seeking pleasure. And they're kind of like nice people, but the ones that are, and I have relatives, the ones that are, the bad ones are the violent ones and the ones that steal. Now, why are they stealing? Because the ice, the drugs are so expensive, $50, $100, 100, I don't know what it costs. I think it was $400 when I first came to Guam. And you know the murders that happened because of it, right? Not that many, but like the firemen. So decriminalize drugs across the board, distribute it from universities, so many benefits. Research, studied, made Puro, taxed, no more cat and mouse chase, and making criminals out of these people, they're just seeking pleasure. They can have these chits, there'll be some limitations, you know, maybe they can't have a firearm, maybe they can't operate certain machines, right? But I don't do drugs, but I have loved ones and friends that do, and it's all related to this medicine, medical marijuana, that's probably one of the best things that have, you know, even recreational marijuana, Pakalolo in Hawaii, that's probably one of the best things they passed, you know, no more fear, no more hiding, the cost of hiding. I bring that up because it's all medically related, it's all healing-related. That might be, that might be it, unless anybody else has any questions for me, I will expand in any way I can.
Sidus Massey, Mr. Markward. Senator Duane Yarzada, any questions or comments? Senator Brown? All right, I want to thank you again for your testimony today. Sidus Massey.
Senator Tlahe and others, senators, thank you also. And I may have missed something, and if I have, I'll remember when I'm driving away, but I just want to say thank you very much, God bless. Sidus Massey, that's the one word that we should use. Among my family members, I say Sidus Mahalo, because being raised in Hawaii.
Among my family members, I say Sidus Mahalo, because being raised in Hawaii, but Sidus Mahasi is at the minimum, the least we can say, you know? Not all the other thank yous. I love thank you, thank you's a beautiful word. As a matter of fact, look up Santo Bonacci, he's a spiritual guy, astrotheologist, he considers English the best language, and he speaks about five or 10 languages, including Italian. So, but our language needs to be revived, and all of that is tied to teaching, healing, and the work that you're doing with, I really do appreciate the work that you're doing to help us, everybody, everybody, from the poorest to the richest, all of us, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Markward.
You're welcome. Thank you too.
So senators, there being no additional individuals to present for the testimony, this committee will consider Bill Number 309-36 LS duly heard. The committee will continue to accept written testimony on the bill for the next five business days until June 29, 2022. Please send that via email to senator tlaheguam@gmail.com, or hand-deliver to my office at the Guam Congress Building. This public hearing is now adjourned, and the time is 1:55 PM. Sidus Mahasi.